I would like to call the work session to order at 6:00 PM. Today, we're joined by city council. Megan is on her way and Tyler will be a little later. And Planning Commission today, we're joined by Marissa Jacobs, Harlow Vernwall, Ty Bailey, Monica Ayers, Bill Blank, and Rita Bernhardt. Today, we'll be discussing the 50-year plan. And presenting today will be Beth Goodman with Echo Northwest. And Heather Austin is online with 3J Consulting. Take it away.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And Beth will get this pulled up right here. We have a slideshow presentation to go through.
PowerPoint on the PC is often. There we go. So Heather, can you see this okay where you are? Okay. Hello, my friends here in Scappus. I'm so happy to be here with you today to talk about the 50-year plan. So we are midway in the project. We started back in 2022 and we'll talk in a few minutes about the things we've done. We're here right in the middle of 2023 and the project is going to go on through probably fall of 2024 as we've pushed the schedule out just a little bit. So what we've been working on more recently has been working on the comprehensive plan. So looking at comprehensive plan policies. And as a reminder, a comprehensive plan is the essentially roadmap for how the city is going to develop over the next 20 years. We have been working on looking at the development code update related to the work that we've done in the housing needs analysis and the economic opportunities analysis. Those documents are both done and I believe available for review if you haven't done so. And Lori could certainly tell us where they are. We'll be talking tonight about the development code update. We've been working on evaluating land use efficiency measures. So we know that the city needs potentially a small UGB expansion. And we know that we're looking at setting urban reserves, which was for growth over the 30 to 50-year period. So that leads us to thinking about urban growth boundary expansion and location of urban reserves. To get to that, we have to look at what are the policies the city could adopt to make better use of land within the existing urban growth boundary. Those are a little scattering of where we are. We'll be working on the 50-year plan itself, which will be a specific document that summarizes a lot of this in a nice graphical sort of way, rather than the long technical documents we've been giving you. We'll be starting to work on that later on this fall and into next winter. So a little bit about the deliverables that we've produced so far. So we've got the 50-year plan vision statement. And that is the vision statement for what is it that we want to see happen in Scappus based on this 50-year plan. Housing needs analysis, that was completed late last year, early this year by MIG. The economic opportunities analysis, that's another analysis that was completed by Echo Northwest late last year, early this year. We've been working on an analysis of other land needs. So land needs that aren't either commercial, industrial, or residential. So things like parks and churches and other public uses. That's nearly completed and I believe we are waiting for some of the work in the Parks Master Plan to be finished up. So those are the things that essentially we've done at this point. Where we're going next in terms of deliverables is land use efficiency measures. We'll be talking about some land use efficiency measures tonight. So that'll become more concrete for you. Looking at UGB alternatives analysis, there's a lot of setup you have to do for figuring out where to look for expansion areas or urban reserve areas. And we'll be talking through the beginnings of that tonight. And then we've also been working on the comprehensive plan policy update for the pieces that we've done so far. So around housing and around commercial and industrial. We'll be taking that to the advisory committee meeting next week to start getting their input on that. So in terms of community engagement, we had community conversations where essentially our SAC went out and engaged with different groups of people and got input about our vision for development. We've had a number of community events, so things like the annual town meetings, the farmer's market, Adventure Fest, those are really focused on the vision statement, as were some of the online engagement and surveys. We've been working with our Stakeholder Advisory Committee with 12 meetings between the work that MIG did on the housing needs analysis and the work that the Echo Northwest 3J team has been doing on this project. And then we've also been adding in some newsletter updates so that people know what's going on in the project as we grind through what is a bunch of technical work. Before I go on, are there any questions about what we've done or where we're going? Okay. All right, so I'm going to hand this over in just a moment to Heather who is joining us. She has another hearing tonight in North Plains about a UGB expansion. So she's doing a double header. So we appreciate her being here with us and online. So Heather, I will hand it over to you and you'll tell me when to forward the slides.
Thanks, Beth. Just making sure everybody can hear me all right. Sound good? Okay. Great. Well, thank you so much for allowing me to join you virtually this evening. As Beth said, I'm heading toward a 7:00 PM lengthy public hearing this evening. But first, I wanted to talk about the development code changes coming soon to Scappus. We've been working on a bunch of different topics, but I wanted to break it down for you. There are really three distinct categories of code changes that are separate, but they overlap quite a bit. The first at the top there is the code cleanup or clarification changes. These are things that are intended to provide clarity. You'll see some reformatting happen with this, some language moved around in the code, removal of duplicate standards, just making it easier for anyone to read and understand and implement the development code. There may be some policy decisions related to this that would go directly to Planning Commission and City Council rather than going to that Stakeholder Advisory Committee. The second batch down on the right is the state mandated updates based on the current population. This is different now than what we were working with. Most of you know that in 2019, Oregon Legislature passed House Bill 2001 that required that certain things happen at a population of 10,000, such as allowing duplexes on any lots that would allow single-family detached homes. In this most recent legislative session, they went ahead and changed that population threshold from 10,000 to 2,500. Therefore, we are currently under the state mandate to permit duplexes on any lots where single-family detached homes are permitted, as well as only allowing us to require one parking space per dwelling unit. That is a change because currently we require two per dwelling unit, so four for a duplex. So there are some changes that are state mandated that we'll talk about a little bit more that we have to put together with this project. So we're making sure we're complying with those state laws. And then the third package is the land use efficiency measures. And these are really related to your urban growth boundary expansion plans. To be able to expand an urban growth boundary, a city needs to make a good faith effort that they have thought about how they might accommodate some of the growth within their own existing city limits and urban growth boundary before they look to expand. There's a lot there, but I promise we're going to go into detail about this. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But I could also move forward and we can ask questions on more specifics.
Don't see any questions.
Okay, next slide, please. So related to the code clarification and cleanup, I just wanted you to see these because these are the types of things that will come straight to you without going to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee first. It's like updating definitions, adding review submittal requirements, making sure our residential reviews are clear and objective, which is a state law, formatting, updating sensitive lands chapters, including things like floodplain that we have good state model codes to use for that, how we review certain applications, and then looking at what is no longer pertinent planning practice and removing those sections. Next slide, please. As I mentioned before, the city can propose the urban growth boundary expansion. We do need to look at land use efficiency measures. One type of land use efficiency measure is development code updates. Also included in land use efficiency measures are things like rezoning property from lower density to higher density, and then higher financial provisions such as waiver or deferral of SDCs or property tax exemptions. The SAC, the Stakeholder Advisory Committee, spent a lot of time discussing the far-left column, the development code updates, and what would be appropriate for Scappus. They've spent a little bit of time discussing rezoning and we'll be discussing more of that as we move forward. And then they've spent just a small amount of time or have just been introduced to the ideas of the financial provisions that are in the right column. And that's really because those are outside of kind of the planning realm or the scope of the SAC. But those are available to the city, so we wanted to make sure that we captured that. So that's sort of the breadth of land use efficiency measures we look at and we think about before we propose an urban growth boundary expansion. Next slide, please.
And just to be clear, I don't think that we're looking at any of the financial provisions for certain housing types at this point. I think we are not. And Lori is confirming that I'm right about that. We could.
Correct.
At this point, we aren't.
Correct. Thank you, Beth, for clarifying that. So as far as looking at development code updates, the SAC looked at everything that's here on your list. And I'm going to start at the top with things that are not considered to move forward at this time. Cottage clusters, you currently have cottage cluster standards. They are not quite as dense as far as the spacing of buildings and the limited setbacks and things like that on the site as they could be based on the state model code. But your staff has had a lot of discussions about that and feel the current cottage cluster standards are appropriate for development in Scappus. Housing types is another thing you can look at as far as allowing more housing types in your lower-density zones, such as triplexes, quadplexes, you know, townhouses in your lower-density zones. Again, that's not moving forward at this time. Reducing setbacks or increasing building heights, there was discussion about this at the SAC and both were considered not appropriate for what Scappus is looking for moving forward with development. So those things are not being proposed to move forward, but they were considered. But what is being proposed to move forward are the rest of these issues. The first is to reduce the minimum distance between multifamily buildings. So when multifamily buildings are constructed on an A1 zone or in one of your C or EC zones, you currently have to space them 15 feet apart if they're on the same property. We're proposing to reduce that to 10 feet to get a little more efficiency in the design of those sites with multiple buildings. The next one is to remove the multifamily buffer that's for buildings two stories or less in height. So right now, if you build multifamily on A1 and it's next to a single-family home on the next lot over, you have a setback and then an additional buffer required. But what we are proposing is that a two-story or less multifamily building would have the same height impacts as a single-family home. And so we don't need to set it as far back or have that additional buffer on those lots. And that will allow a little more development potential on those multifamily lots. The next is to look at the maximum lot coverage only for lots with ADUs on them. So it's really saying, we're going to keep our maximum lot coverage as it is. It ranges from 35% to 40% in the R zones and MH, but we're going to allow you to go up to 50% if you're including an accessory dwelling unit. So that allows one more housing unit on the lot with a small increase to the lot coverage. The next is, like I mentioned, we do have to reduce our parking that's required for duplexes and ADUs. And that is a requirement of Scappus due to the current population size that exceeds 2,500. And then the final is to reduce the minimum residential lot sizes for middle housing and multifamily, which I'm going to go into detail on the next slide. Any questions on that?
Do have one question.
Hi, thank you. Heather, you had mentioned if you go remove multifamily buffer, same setbacks for two building stories or less in height. It could allow for a little bit more development. Can you please expand upon that statement? What does a little bit more development, like what are we going to gain?
Yes, thank you. That's a great question. So currently, and I might lean on Lori for how wide the buffer is in addition to the setback, but I believe it's 10 to 15 feet.
Yeah, it's 15 feet in addition to the required setbacks. So setbacks in the A1 zone is five feet to one side and 10 feet to the other. So you'd potentially have, you know, that in addition to the 15-foot buffer.
So you would then be able to now build into that 15-foot buffer if your building does not exceed two stories in height. So it'd be the same setback as a single-family home or a duplex on the adjacent lot, knowing that you're not going to have anything higher than two stories. And two stories would be a height of a single-family home that's permitted in all zones, that permits single-family two-storieds as permitted.
Probably not going to be on this one, but the parking changes are going to have to look at easement or so on for on-street parking because I could already tell you the density in some of these locations, it's going to get bad on our main thoroughfares because we don't have parking overflow on streets.
So yeah, I'll just real briefly, Heather, I'll respond. So you don't need an easement to park on the street. So public streets, you just park there if there's space. Granted, yeah, and so we have some older streets that are substandard that might only allow parking on one side, for instance. Any new street that's constructed with new development in a subdivision, say where they're dedicating right-of-way on the plat, that is to our local street standard, which does allow parking on both sides. So granted, there could be situations where in older parts of town, that is an issue.
That's what I was concerned on. We have a number of lots.
We do.
My question, like in our neighborhoods, the streets are wide enough to have parking on both sides and one car fit in between typically. And we can't change that to say, okay, if we're going to go one parking spot, because what if, I guess there isn't a lot of traffic going through there at any one time.
And I guess that's kind of the thing, right? If you're dedicating more land for right-of-way, it drives up the cost of development. Obviously, you have less land than to develop. It is also, it might seem counterintuitive, but it is traffic calming. When it narrows down, it does force you to slow down in order to pass the cars. I'm sure you've been in Portland where you kind of have to do the slalom, you know, kind of passing.
Though you're going to have less opportunity to go because if it's a duplex with one spot and there's three cars, there's going to be a lot more cars on the street.
Yeah.
They'll be backed up to back up. So you'll have to go into someone's driveway and be a little bit less.
Yeah, or you might have to park further down the street to where the street is slightly wider, to where it makes it a little easier. That's not to say, these are minimums. That's not to say a builder wouldn't provide adequate parking knowing that they want their residents there long-term. We do have several builders in town who always build the same type of structure because they know that that keeps the tenant long-term. So these are minimums. And it's always, you know, it always provide more parking if they want.
The one I was thinking earlier, then if you can do a duplex with just one parking spot, you don't need a garage. You don't need to provide any kind of a garage, just a parking spot.
It's a parking spot per unit. Yeah, one per unit.
So two for a duplex.
Two total. So if they did provide a garage, that does count as a space. Generally, there's space in front of that, too. Then you get your two. But they don't have to provide a garage, no.
Great questions.
We have another question.
I don't deal as much in the traffic code. I believe that we have a time limit on how long RVs can be parked in the street.
Week in the same space.
Yeah, there is a time limit for on the street. And obviously, if it's on their property, that is different, right? I mean, but they're still not to be, you know, not supposed to be jumping curbs or, you know, essentially damaging infrastructure to get the RV on and off their property.
Okay, if they have an RV, they would likely need to find a place to store it off-site, basically.
Okay, thank you for all those questions.
Could you maybe?
Son, just bring it closer.
There you go.
Go ahead. Oh, yeah. One other follow-up, and this is more for future planning. When we look at the older lots, will we be assessing like sidewalks, so on, extending further as part of our planning? Because we can't just do the lot if we're planning on parking extending further out. We already have constraints for bike paths, pedestrians. And if the side of the road is going to start being parking space as well, we're going to have other challenges.
So I'm sorry, could you?
Sidewalk requirements extending beyond the lot length for?
Typically, we can't ask for a whole lot off the lot. That gets a little problematic with showing, you know, proportionality for basically what's being built. And if they're providing their own frontage, that's more difficult to do. You know, that could be, there are times when the city can partner with developers to extend some sidewalk. We have done that on several projects. When we see those opportunities, we try and jump on them.
Okay, Heather, go ahead.
Okay, great. Next slide, please. So there's a lot here. I'm going to take it in chunks. If we can advance one time, Beth, there we go. So I'm going to start with what's not changing. We are not proposing any changes to the single-family detached style of housing. So this is the majority of housing in Scappus, over 80%, I believe, is single-family detached on individual lots. And those will not change. The current use of those stays the same. Anything in the future stays the same. We are not proposing any changes. Let's see, let's advance one. The first change that we are proposing is based on the state law, again, that duplexes can be built on any lot that a single-family detached home can be built on. So now you see that instead of 10,000 square feet in the R1 zoning district, you can build a duplex if you have 6,000 square feet, which is the same as your single-family detached standard. We had floated this to the SAC at 8,000 square feet so that it would be a reduction of what's current, but maybe a little more than the 6,000. That was well-received by the SAC, but then the state law changed in the middle of this process just about a month ago. So we had to update these to reflect the state law. So everything in the orange here makes duplexes permissible on the same-size lots in the same zone as single-family detached. And that's state law, so that's moving forward. Next circle, please, or advanced, please. Thank you. Middle housing, which I know you've done plenty of work on in the past couple of years, is based on the minimum lot size for the first two units. And then each additional unit requires additional square footage of your lot. So the SAC was a little more inclined to make changes to both the middle housing and the multifamily housing, which we'll talk to in a second. But this makes the minimum lot sizes not quite as low as duplex. So acknowledging that there is more housing that could occur on the lot if you are talking about a triplex or a quadplex rather than a duplex, but allowing those to go down a little bit for a little more land use efficiency of current lots. And then moving forward into any UGB areas that are zoned this way, these would apply there as well. And then one more advance, please. The SAC was most on board with making changes along the lines of your multifamily housing. So your A1 high-density zoning district, this is where the city has designated high-density to occur. Your comprehensive plan and your zoning map show that this is where you want to concentrate your higher residential density uses. There is, however, very little A1 land remaining in the city, but there could be a little added through those zone changes we discussed. And then if the UGB is expanded, we would anticipate there being some A1 zone land in the new UGB area. So these standards would also apply there. And as I said, the SAC was generally in agreement that these were appropriate changes to the A1 zoning district. Next slide, please. Oh, maybe we want to go back and stay on that slide and take questions, though, before we?
Heather, the next few slides provide a little more context.
Okay.
So maybe go through them and then circle back.
Thank you, yes. So I will just present this one really fast and then Beth will have a few for you. And then we can talk about those and maybe go back to that slide. But what the SAC asked us to do was compare the proposed changes in Scappus and current Scappus to cities of similar size with sort of similar situation. So not in a metro area, but similar population and similar sort of geography, I guess you would say. So the top row is Scappus as it exists today. And so those are our maximum densities that we would see for each of those housing types based on what we just showed in the A1 zoning district. So this would be all related to the A1. So again, you won't see single-family detached here because that's not a housing type that we have in our A1 zoning district. But the proposed is the second bolded line. So all those numbers do go up a bit, except for townhouse, which stays the same. And then Seaside, Yumitella, Madras, and Staton. As you can see here, the existing and proposed Scappus numbers fall roughly within the same areas as the rest of these cities. Any questions about comparable cities? Okay, Beth, why don't you go ahead and present some of the examples and then we can loop back to questions?
I just, could I, I just wanted to make one point here because it might be a little bit confusing. We do have A1-zoned land. As Heather mentioned, we don't have very much of it available. It's pretty much been built out. There's maybe a few acres left. Where we have been seeing apartments or apartments proposed has been generally in our commercial and expanded commercial zones over the last, you know, 10 years or so. And again, that's because there's hardly any A1-zone land available. We are not proposing any changes to any of the standards in the commercial or expanded commercial zone as it relates to apartments. I just wanted to just make that clear.
So would we be looking to increase our A1, is looking at our R4 and our R1? Look to rezone it?
Yes, and we will be getting to that.
Go ahead.
So the SAC wanted a few examples of what this kind of density looked like. And so we pulled some examples from Eugene and Wilsonville. And it's not because we think that Scappus is so like Eugene or Wilsonville. It's that those are cities that actually have examples that we could copy where we knew the density. Because it's hard to look at a house and say, oh, yeah, that's 22 dwelling and it's an acre. Most people, including myself, can't do that. So looking at the middle housing types, so things like the duplexes, the triplexes, the quads, and the townhouses, what we're showing here is an example of 12 dwelling units an acre from some existing townhouses in Scappus and some 17 dwelling units an acre for townhouses in Eugene. So a little bit different, but in a lot of ways, not formatively different. Here's some more examples. This green housing is in Eugene at 20 dwelling units an acre. Something similar in Wilsonville, but in a newly-built area. So it kind of looks like it's on a hill in the middle of nowhere. It's just the trees haven't grown up yet. And then we also have some quadplexes here in Scappus at 16 dwelling units an acre. You see that these things can look really different. But what I will mention is they all look a lot like single-family detached housing in that they have their own entrances. in that they have their own entrances and their own units in those ways, in ways that you'd recognize. And then looking at some multifamily housing examples, and here we're talking about multifamily of the type that would be in A1. You've got an eightplex on Maple Street that was in at thirty-four dwelling units an acre. And something similar in Eugene at twenty-five dwelling units an acre. This is why I say you can't look at something and say, that's what the density is.
And then just, so we have thirty-four and twenty-five, and the recommended changes to A1 would be twenty-eight units per acre recommended.
We're trying to give you some examples that hit sort of in the middle there. And then some other examples that you're probably familiar with, the first one, and this is related more to your C and EC development. So the peace candle apartments at forty-two dwelling units an acre. And then an example from way up above of some thirty-six dwelling unit acre multifamily in Eugene. So these are, these are some examples to give you a few different pictures of what these types of housing look like. And then the last question that was asked before we go back to the slide, a few slides before and ask for questions is, how much is this going to buy us? Well, we know that certainly all of the potential capacity that would be in these areas, you know, your R1 zone, for instance, it's not going to build out entirely with duplexes. So we estimated between three and 10% of your vacant land. How many dwelling units would that be? So with these kind of changes for your R1, you're looking at twenty-five to eighty-two additional dwelling units. And I think the high might actually be genuinely a high example. In your R4, you're looking at five to eighteen additional dwelling units. And part of that, along with your MH, you just don't have a lot of R4 land. And you've got even less A1 land. We're estimating between eight and sixteen. And the A1 assumes that you get a lot more capacity. Like fifty percent, seventy-five percent and a hundred percent of additional capacity. You're still not talking about all that many dwelling units, given the fact that you just don't have that much land that's zoned A1. So the answer is, for what you've got in the UGB right now, you're probably not going to gain a lot of new housing except in your R1 where you have, you know, the potential to gain some more new housing. It's also a consideration of if you expand your UGB either now or in the future, what might you be looking at in terms of new housing? We haven't talked about housing affordability, but it is worth mentioning that housing affordability is of course an issue in Scappus along with, you know, all of, all of Western Oregon, all of the West Coast. It's not a Scappus unique thing, but you think about, do I want my children to be able to live here? Do I want, I'm going to pick on NJ. Do I want NJ to be able to buy a house here rather than in, you know, North Plains? He's recently bought a house in North Plains.
It's a hotspot, though.
It is, and we're very happy for him. But if you think about it, having some more smaller units, smaller lot housing opens up affordability to people who are just locked out of the market at this point. And so we're trying to find a line that is acceptable for Scappus between, you know, expanding potential housing types and development densities a little bit without changing the atmosphere of Scappus, without fundamentally changing what Scappus is. And I would say that that is, you know, our SAC has struggled with this. And I know we've got a number of SAC members here who might want to speak to that. But we're hoping you'll help us, guide us on these land use efficiency measures so that we can take our next steps. And with that, I'll just hop back to this prior slide. Y'all can ask any questions.
Yes, one I have for a moment is if we identify something in town as an R1 and say we'd like to rezone it as A1. Does the home, the property owner, can he still build R1 housing in there if we've changed it to A1? And do they usually not like that because it's changed what they can do on their land? Or they usually like that because it allows them, maybe their value goes up? I mean.
Well, I can touch on a few of that. First of all, I don't think that we would go R1 to A1 just because typically you'll have higher density near the center of town, then it would go R4, then it would go R1. So your R1 would be further from the center of town, A1. We want that close to services. So likely it would be what we are looking at would be an R4 changing to A1, which R4 is the moderate density zone. Once the new zoning takes effect, you could maintain an existing home in good repair. But any brand new development would need to be in conformance with the current zoning, A1. So I will say that typically it's not a negative because it will increase the property value. And for some particularly prime, in my opinion, land to look at for rezone, we do have a willing property owner who owns eight acres of our foreland that happens to be sandwiched between Highway 30 and Old Portland Road, which is a great location if you're going to go high density. And so that's something that we would consider and I, you have the map in here.
You have the map in here.
Look at the map too, because it's definitely something we would want your feedback on to see if we're going to move that forward.
Then our four, we would be losing even more. We're already at a deficit there or low. So then you'd have to either look at our one or.
It is.
Sort of rolls out.
Can I add one more thing to what you said, Lori? That was great. I think the thing I would add is that we are required by state law to notify the property owner before we do any kind of zone change that, of what the changes might be to their property so that nobody's caught off guard. Everybody gets notification that here's what you can currently do. Here's what we're proposing to change it to. They have an opportunity to, you know, of course, speak to staff before public hearings, but they've got public hearings at Planning Commission and at City Council to be sure to make their voice heard. So I think, as Lori said, you have some willing folks who want to change their property over. But if there was anybody who we hadn't had contact with, who it made a lot of sense to rezone, they would definitely be notified and have an opportunity to have that discussion.
So just for clarity, are we, did I hear correctly that next few slides where it's like color coded on the map? Is that highlighting the proposed changes of the land of what it currently is zoned and what the proposed zoning changes are?
These are a little separate from what we're talking about. This would be the potential zone changes. So hoping to talk about that after we finish talking about the changes to the zoning code, the development standards, if that's okay? Okay.
Commissioner Blank, this is a 50-year plan. I'm looking at Yumitilla and I'm looking at those figures, which are rather higher compared to the others. That's a growing area. And they want more density, obviously. Because they have taken a good look at what they think their industrial, commercial growth will be in that area and for how ahead did they look?
Heather, do you know for Yumitilla?
I don't know Yumitilla right off the top of my head, but I will say that Scappus is one of the only cities I know of doing 50-year planning at this point. I think twenty years is more what everyone tends to be doing. So they may have looked a little further out, but I think you're right that they are anticipating growth in their employment sector and so looking to make sure they have workforce housing to support that.
I can speak more to Madras.
Keep that in mind when we're looking at this about our industrial and commercial growth.
Right, certainly. And you have some really interesting opportunities for commercial and industrial growth here. I can speak more to Madras and say that Madras is looking at a growing city as a result of the pressure in Bend. What's going on with the housing prices in Central Oregon, which are simply insane. And Madras is certainly a place where people live because they can afford it. I'm not going to compare Madras directly to Scappus or vice versa, but it's not dissimilar in a certain sense. They're at an edge of an urban area where there's a lot of price pressure from Bend. Madras happens to be a little further from Bend than Scappus is from Portland.
Yeah, I've been there.
Yeah.
A lot of growth.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And same with Bam, of course. It's incredible. I was in Idaho not all that long ago. I'm seeing the same thing there.
It's what we are, where we're doing work in Idaho and Montana, places, you know, Colorado, of course. We're seeing this all over the Intermountain West.
Remember, Yumitilla did get a windfall of money, some building something there. And they've gotten hundreds of millions of dollars in their budget compared to us. So, oh, they're doing something. Can't remember what.
Haven't talked to you yet, Joe. What your needs are.
Mr. Mayor? Well, first I would like to thank the team presenting. I think you guys offered a very fair characterization of the conversation that took place at the advisory committee. And so, you know, the thinking behind how we arrived at these numbers really was that we wanted to, you know, preserve the current feel with the single family homes, which I think you said is what, eighty-five percent of our current housing stock?
I think it's closer to eighty.
Okay.
It's seventy to eighty.
And really look at opportunities to increase density where density already exists. And we felt that that was kind of the best way to achieve the goal of what we heard in the community visioning. You know, help people like the rural look and feel of the community, but still try to meet the requirements. So I guess my question is, you know, if we are looking at achieving, you've got the projections of like what our gains could be there at the three percent, six percent and 10%. So just for context, when we did the housing need analysis, by 2043, at a 1% growth rate, we would need 1,041 additional residential units. So this gets us at best, maybe, you know, close to a 10% net gain. Is that enough to just, like, have we done enough with this, you think, to be successful at a go at a UGB expansion?
I'll answer and then I'll let Heather answer. I think of this as passing the red face test. Between this and the rezoning that we're talking about, I do not feel embarrassed to, I'm not red faced to present this and to say to DLCD that Scappus is making a genuine effort. I think, I think it is a genuine effort. So it's unclear what enough is. And is this enough for sure, what we want? No. Until we, until we, you know, make specific proposals and get responses to it.
I will say too, just to add to that, that we made a lot of changes in 2017, 2018 when we adopted the last housing needs analysis. And I would say, coupled with that being not that long ago, plus, plus these additional changes, I think, I don't know that they would look back at that, but that's how I approached it.
I think that we claimed some of that land use.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we mentioned that for sure when we write a report to that effect. But also, you know, the state is kind of, it's moving the bar a little bit by, you know, changing the duplex rules and the parking rules and, and all these things that are happening that used to be like kind of the low hanging fruit of land use efficiency measures are now required of us. But I think, I mean, we were already talking about them before they changed the law. So we get credit. You know, we need to just couch it in a way that we've made a good faith effort. We've had so many conversations about what works for Scappus and we've really been thoughtful about what we're proposing. And so I think, I agree with Beth, we can put this forward and have a good faith effort that we have done what we're supposed to do.
Thank you.
So I think what we need at this point is, you don't have to say, we fully agree with this. We definitely want exactly this. But if you've got red flags and you're thinking this is a bad idea in some way, we need to know about that soon. So I wouldn't, you know, call a vote or something like that. But, and I imagine it's going to take you a little bit of time to absorb it. But I think the right thing to do is talk to Lori here over the next week or two, if you have concerns. Because we have to have something to move forward on so that we know how much land we're looking at for UGB expansion.
I think there's a difference between agreeing and liking it.
Right. Yes, indeed.
We know, we know.
Yes. I would frame it as really intensely orange or yellow flags. Yellow, you know, or red flags, rather. Yellow flags, you know, we understand.
Well, I would think that somewhere behind us, there's another generation of people that'll be looking at our 50-year plan and wanting to make changes to what we've done here.
That seems to be the way it goes, yes.
There should be some flexibility built in there.
Not seeing any more comments, I was going to go and briefly talk about the rezones we're talking about. And Lori really knows more about these than I do. So looking at the north, we've got about two lots with about six and a half buildable acres where I believe you have a landowner who would like to rezone from industrial to commercial. And that's.
Opposite.
For, from.
Industrial to commercial.
That's what I was saying.
The northern parcel in red is already zoned commercial in the county. The blue parcel under it is identified or designated as industrial on our comp plan map, as is the red one. So the red is not really matching our designation already. And so the thought was, because we have such a surplus of industrial land, that it could make sense, being that it's on the corner there, sort of an entrance to the northern end of the airport, to have commercial uses in that location. This, this made sense to us as staff. Again, we have a willing property owner. Moving further south and slightly to the west, west of 30, there are two parcels there. Not a ton of buildable acreage, a total of four buildable acres, again, from industrial to commercial. Being that it's right on the highway, that makes sense to staff and again, willing request, requests from the property owner. The two in the middle, the yellow and the green, those would just be moving to, the one on the right is actually A1 zoned land, but it's in the flood plain. And it's also Chief Concomly Park. So we just want to rezone that to public lands to match the use that it currently has. The yellow parcel then to the west, again, that's the Grabhorn Park parcel that we know will be developing with park uses. It's currently zoned R1, and so we're looking to rezone that to public lands recreation to match the use that is coming up soon. And then further south, and you might need to look at your packets, that's kind of small, but that's the eight acres where we have a willing property owner, that's south of Havlic. And then sandwiched between Highway 30 and Old Portland Road. That would kind of make sense to have as either A1 or expanded commercial zone. You want your high density land to be near lots of services. And so it really does make sense. And so that's something we would be also looking to do potentially.
And you've got a willing landowner.
We have a willing landowner with eight contiguous acres, which is rare.
A good place for A1 comparatively.
Right now, only a couple houses?
Yeah, there's a few. I don't, I haven't counted how many. A lot of it is vacant.
And the number of buildable acres doesn't assume that the existing houses are, be developed. It assumes that they'll stay.
And do we have a sense with these, I guess, that change to the eight acres, how many additional units potentially we could get?
Well, at fifteen dwelling units an acre, there's some, you'd have to do some subtraction that I cannot do in my head related to what you could get on R4 and what you can get in A1. So bring that information, but I haven't done that analysis quite yet. Are there any concerns about this, what we're talking about? I imagine if anybody else comes forward to Lori and says, I want to rezone my land, and it, you know, makes sense for the community that that's something that Lori would be bringing forward. But these are all also land use efficiency measures. While we haven't talked about commercial, we focus so much on housing, there is a deficit of commercial land as well. Sir?
Actually, real quick for the northernmost, the commercial, it would not be zoned like an airport commercial or anything.
No.
That would be just pre-commercial.
Yep.
So all that makes perfect sense, like, seems like logical to do. So question I have is, when we talk about.
Uh, so question I have is, when we talk about changes, so talking about, and give me a moment, I'm trying, I'm trying to sort of help this out. So when we're talking about these residential lot changes, on our current buildable, I guess what I'm trying to envision is, what is our current inventory of land? Like, where is it all plotted? And when we change, um, lot sizes, or, I'm sorry, the, yeah, when we change the minimum lot sizes, uh, how will that look like on a map? Like, will we visually, and are you able to visually kind of give us an idea of, here's where all the buildable land is, with these changes, we're going to go from two, and this will net us, if it was to, if we could put a quad, a quadruplex or can put a different type of middle housing, or a triplex, like, it could eventually net us X and num, X number of, of homes. Am I?
So there's a, so the, the map of vacant, available, buildable land, um, is in the housing capacity analysis report. So that's what you could reference to say, okay, these are the locations in the city currently that are unconstrained and buildable. Um, and then if you talk about then, well, if we rezone, you know, say that orange parcel at the, um, south end of town from R4 to A1, that's going to be, that's not going to necessarily show up on the map. You, we would have to do a calculation to show the difference in units that we could net from that.
Okay.
But then as this goes to adoption, we would have updated zoning maps that would then show that changing in, in zoning from R4 to, to A1 or to C or EC.
Okay. I think what I'm, I'm always trying to get to over the last couple of years is just trying to understand, like, where are we going to be putting all this housing? So this makes a lot of sense, what you're showing right now.
Sure.
Um, I think you know where I'm going.
Yeah, well, I was going to say, and I reviewed kind of your public testimony from last week and stuff, just to have it fresh in my mind, but, and I think what, what I wanted to say is that it's, your zone, the zoning map shows the plan for the city, where we expect housing, where we expect commercial, where we expect, you know, industrial. The comprehensive plan map shows what we expect, um, for everything, including properties not yet annexed into city limits. And so as we do a UGB expansion, say, even that new land that's coming, that we're expanding to, correct me if I'm wrong, but we designate that at the time that we.
Designate, you don't zone.
Correct, you designate. So any land that's going to come into the UGB will be designated for its final use, again, housing, industrial, commercial.
Urban reserves are not designated.
Not urban reserves, I did know that. So, so that's your roadmap. It's not, it's going to tell you where the general uses are located in the city. That, that's what you look at to get that sense.
And that's been recently updated, or in the process of being updated?
We're doing that here.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you've got the buildable lands map and the housing capacity analysis. That tells you where your vacant land is, and then through this, we'll be updating the comprehensive plan map.
Okay. We have a current comprehensive plan, they're actually, they're right next to you. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So are there any further comments about the potential for rezones? Otherwise, I'd like to take just a few moments and run you through where we're going with the UGB analysis. All right, I don't see any objections.
Heather will disappear here in a little bit, maybe, for another meeting.
I can hang, yeah. Do you need, um, I'm happy to answer any other questions, but I, I will jet if, uh, if you think I.
You can leave, it, it's okay. You have like five minutes between meetings.
Good luck.
Thank you. And if there are follow-up questions for me, Lori, um, and I are emailing all the time, so she will get those to me, and I'm happy to respond.
Terry Linehan is there, tell her SCAPU says hello.
I sure will, I'm headed right over there. Okay, take care, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so when we're doing the urban growth boundary analysis, um, this is the, the state process that we'll be going through. Um, and so I'm just going to walk you through what some of the, the first, I would call them decision points, but they aren't really decision points. So in gray here is the existing urban growth boundary, and the solid line around it is a half mile out, and then the, uh, dotted line around it is a mile out. So we're required to look at all the land in the half mile out, and then some of the land between half and one mile. Um, and the, uh, sort of yellowish, creamish colored is land that is in county zoning, um, for exceptions, so like rural residential or rural commercial. Um, those are, uh, the areas that we'll need to look at first, um, which we'll talk about that in a few moments. And the area in brown is in farm and forest soil, so things like exclusive farm use, that kind of thing.
Beth, if we are going to go more than five minutes, um, do I, just, should we go longer than that? Should we?
I think we can just go five minutes so that, so that you guys have a sense of where we're going, and you're not surprised when you see this next. There's not a lot of discretion on this part of it. Okay, we'll decide at the end of this, in the next, uh, like, three and a half minutes, what you want to do next. Um, so we look at constraints, so where your floodplain, your floodway, your steep slopes, your landslide hazards, wetlands, we're not going to go to those places. Um, so you can see that there's a lot of, uh, constraints all around the city. And then we get to the, the point where we're thinking about what, what is the priority for inclusion in land? And I apologize for, uh, quoting administrative rules to you, but I'm going to. So the administrative rules say that the first priority, um, for inclusion in a UGB is urban reserve land, you don't have any of that. Um, exceptions land, that's all in the yellowish, creamish color, and non-resourced land, you don't have any of that around you. So you don't have any urban reserves, you don't have any non-resourced land, so we're looking at all of that yellow and cream land, um, uh, around you. So that's our first, um, place that we have to go. Um, obviously, we're going to avoid the areas that are, are heavily, uh, constrained, um, you see them in hash marks here. Um, and so all of this land on the, is that east side in the pretty green, dark green is the best quality, um, farm soils, high quality, you really can't go there. And then you've got some sort of mid-quality, um, farm soils in the lighter green, um, and that's still a lower priority. Um, that's third priority land. Um, you don't have any second priority land around, only a few counties in the state have that. So we first have to look at all of the land within a, a half mile that is in exceptions land, and we might have to look at some of the, um, land that is within a half, when I'm, within a mile that's in exceptions land. The size of your urban reserves, um, and the size of your urban growth boundary, it's going to fit into that unconstrained, um, uh, exception zoning, so that existing county zoning land. There's a lot of it out there. Um, we've divided this up into some different, uh, uh, study areas that we're going to be refining, and these areas that are, are in all of the numbered, um, areas, we're going to be making those smaller, as we're required to, um, and evaluating all of that land. So when we look at this, we see that in those, uh, 11 study areas, there's about 900 unconstrained acres of land within a, uh, I believe that is the half-mile buffer. Um, so there's a lot of land to look at, and that's where we're going to be, um, going next, is, is starting to look at that land and evaluate, um, different opportunities.
Do you need anything else from us on that part of it?
Do not. As long as you're okay with it, and if you want to have more discussion of it, I think just tell Alex and Lori, and we can certainly arrange that.
All right.
Thank you.
Great, anything final? Appreciate it. You, Beth?
Thank you.
Needing adjourned, see you in 20 seconds.